Mr. Cooney?
Here.
Dr. Cordelino?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Dr. Kane? Mr. Moterek?
Here.
Mr. Morella?
Here.
Ms. Novy?
Here.
Mr. Orion?
Here.
Mr. Powell?
Here.
Shannon Chang? And Zion Carter? Foreign brother.
Thank you, please rise for the flag. I am the President of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on one nation, under God, in the universal, liberty, and justice for all. Jim, please read the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law Statement.
New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public body who have advanced notice to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon.
In accordance with the provision of the Act, Montefiore Township Board of Education approved this meeting date. The notice of the meeting has been posted at the municipal building on Montefiore Public Schools, Montefiore Public Laboratory, Montefiore Township Board of Education Administrative Office Building, Montefiore Public School Website, and Avenue Class 11.
Thank you. Our high school student representatives are not here right now, should they arrive, we will immediately defer the meeting to them for their report. So, right now, we'll turn to the superintendent's report.
Good evening and welcome, it's nice to see so many people here tonight. We probably came to find out if there's going to be any school tomorrow. So, anyway, it is good to see you here. And I do have two items to briefly touch upon. The first one is that in our good news report from last meeting, we did report that Brandon Wong had auditioned for and was accepted into the All-State Orchestra. Actually, he plays the tuba and was accepted, auditioned for and accepted into the All-State Band. So, congratulations to Brandon, and we apologize for that mistake. The second area has to do with snow days. So, to update the board and community, we have now used our fourth snow day as of yesterday. And we did have four built into our 2013-2014 school calendar. The listing of the makeup days are listed at the bottom of the 2013-2014 school calendar. The first makeup day, if we in fact had surpassed four a month ago, was actually January 20th, which was our professional development day. Since that day has passed, if we should use another snow day, the first give-back day is President's Day, February 17. That would become our fifth snow day. And then, we begin to go into our spring break, starting with April 14th, the first day of the league, and continuing over the next four days. Certainly keeping my fingers crossed that we don't have to use any or all of them. But again, the first day we would have to use is President's Day, February 17. I bring that up tonight for informational purposes. Does the board any questions or comments about that? Okay, so this was agreed upon as the board, as the calendar committee created the calendar and the board approved it. And we will get this information out to the entire community so that they are aware of the progression of our snow days. Okay. We now have some exciting presentations. We're always excited when our students are here, particularly when they're here to be recognized. And tonight, we'll be presenting awards to our ShopRite stars. I believe Ken Asdick, our Assistant Principal at the high school, is here this evening. Invite Ken to come up to the microphone. And Dr. Cordelino, would you like to join Ken there or stay here?
Of course.
Which is your purpose? You'll join him? Okay. Mr. Asdick probably has his own list. We have one up here as well, and Dr. Cordelino will assist you in handing out the awards. Once you get your award, would you please also come up to the board table so we can congratulate you as well?
Good evening, I'm proud to announce the ShopRite stars for marking period two. These five students were nominated by a faculty member in their respective fields and then ultimately chosen by an administrative councilor. Each displays tremendous talent, determination, work ethic, and each is an incredible asset to the school and to our district. Please join me in celebrating this accomplishment as I introduce each student to share a little bit of background information about what they did to deserve the award that they received. In the field of academics, congratulations to Ben Gordiosi. Ben is a member of the National Honor Society, forensics, and has taken three AP classes. The several teachers who nominated him describe him as proactive, engaged, and always willing to add insight when meeting class discussion. In short, a model student. In the field of athletics, congratulations to Kayla Lewis. Kayla was a four-year starter on the RCV field hockey team, captain of the team her senior year, and was selected for first-team all-conference in field hockey. Kayla was also nominated in the field of leadership because in addition to her work on the field, she is also involved in DECA and currently the president of the French Honor Society. In the field of arts, congratulations to Anthony Fizzi. Anthony has been heavily involved in the school of hockey, it's his co-president. He has also assisted the school on several occasions and over countless hours, troubleshooting and correcting technical issues in the auditorium. Anthony's assistance with these stage issues is directly tied to the success of our finals performances and program. In the field of leadership, congratulations to Isaac Inkoff. Isaac was also nominated in the field of arts for his work at the Drama Club, 2013 Award at the Shakespearean Theater, and submission of a short film to Sundance. However, his work in pals and forensics and service some local healthcare centers with a therapy door while also maintaining outstanding GPA is what sets him apart as a leader. Last but not least, in the field of community service, congratulations to Deanna Passeretti. Deanna's raised more than $7,000 since becoming key club president, including $1,400 for USF and $900 for Slum Cettering. Deanna led the charge on the Thanksgiving food drive which collected the most food in Montefiore's history. She has also delivered 149 gifts to children as part of Operation Christmas Child. And when she isn't preoccupied with those important programs, assists with the Montefiore Women's Club, marching band, and PTC.
Could the students who just received the awards come step back up and take photos?
Just a quick follow-up, you'll notice that several of these students were nominated in multiple categories, which speaks to how talented they all are. I've had the privilege to get to know each of these students and can honestly say that they represent Montefiore's best. Again, congratulations.
Congratulations to all of our ShopRite award winners. We absolutely admire the work that you're doing, both in our schools and in the community, so thank you. And Ken, thank you very much. It's wonderful, we also have some other award winners this evening. We have the BFW Patriots Pen Essay Contest Award winners. And I'm going to ask Dr. Cordelino to help with these as well. And I see several administrators in Lizarra in our audience this evening. But it looks like John Vasselli, our Assistant Principal at Lizarra, is going to do the honors. So, John, welcome.
I'm so excited about the number of support. Being a former U.S. history teacher in this district, I think it's so important not only to work on writing skills with our students and essay skills with our students, but also give them opportunities to display patriotism, civics, and what it means to be a citizen in this country, the true republican virtues that go back to Jefferson and Washington and Adam. So, not to bore people with a history lesson, but I'm really excited about this. And I just want to, you know, the administration of Lizarra will be through this, if we didn't thank the BFW Post for all the wonderful things they do in our building, such as the Patriots Pen Essay Contest each year. And I just want to recognize a few guided guests, I want to thank Post Commander Frank Warhol for coming here tonight. It's my pleasure to introduce to the board and Dr. Freed, Mr. Joe Culp of the Post, who helped with the essay. He's going to say a few words on behalf of the Post.
Thank you, John. I'm Joe Culp from the Montefiore Veterans of Foreign Wars, Post 5481, and Chairman of the Patriots Pen Contest. Thank you, members of Board of Education, assembled guests and students. Throughout these many years, your Montefiore BFW Post has offered a competition to students of the Lizarra Middle School. An opportunity to enter a nationwide contest on essay writing, which they call the Patriots Pen, which teaches both patriotism and pride in country while awakening their writing skills and cognitive skills. This year's topic, what patriotism means to me, attracted a number of Lizarra student entries. We have two finalists, Connor Beetrod with a second-place entry, and Francis O'Marren, our first-place finalist. Congratulations to both students on their excellent work, and thanks to Assistant Principal John Vasselli for his help, which was excellent in getting the job done. And thank you, Montefiore Board of Education. Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to introduce our two students, Connor Beetrod and Francis O'Marren. Why don't you come down?
Congratulations to Francis and Connor. We thank you for participating and of course, for your excellent work. And John, thank you for being here to present this evening. Our third and last presentation this evening is going to be from Austin Thompson, who's our technology manager. Austin's going to be sharing with us a program called Parent Access, which we, as part of our quest to help with communications with our parents, community, students, is going to be sharing some information. It's going to be a bit of a PowerPoint. I think our board can stay here because they're on opposite walls, you can sit with them here. So, Austin, thank you for being here.
Thank you. It's a pretty short presentation. So, I'm here today to talk about improving communication with Parent Access. I want to talk a little bit about some of the initiatives we have that we're working on already and some that we're hoping to move forward with.
So, perhaps Austin, before you start, this will really, this really will be a short presentation if you'd like to stay, but if you feel that you need to get your students home, we can take a 30-second timeout and let you leave. Okay, Austin, thank you.
So, the objectives of our improving communication is to collect and provide all information online through Parent Access, which as you know proudly is our parent-facing portion of our student information system genesis that most parents have access to. By collecting and providing information online, we'd like to save money by reducing mailings or having none at all if possible. Also, reducing workload on existing staff by having parents enter data, not the staff. And also allowing students to access their data, particularly at the high school level. We also improve data quality by having parents update their own data in one place. This will help by tying in the student information system into the emergency alert system, which we currently use Honeywell. That'll also improve data quality because staff are entering data that was sent in to the schools. We also want to improve data availability in emergencies and bring devices off-site instead of paper. Currently, the schools bring emergency cards that are filled out once a year and possibly updated. This would provide up-to-date information because we'd be pulling it from Genesis and pushing it out to these devices that would be brought out. We have a data issue and a plan to solve it. The biggest problem with our data is that we know it's very inaccurate because the parents do not inform us of contact information changes. But most of them do update Honeywell because they want to get the phone calls about school closings and things like that. So, schools are currently keeping contact information on paper and then they enter it into the student information system. Some of those reasons that they do that are good, like emergency cards, they want to make sure they can bring them somewhere if there's an emergency. And some of them are not for non-subordinate reasons that we want to solve. And to solve the data problem, we want to take the accurate data that we know is fairly accurate in the emergency cards and put it into Genesis. And then, the schools won't be using paper anymore. And then, we want to allow the parents to update that information themselves online all the time so we can ensure that we have accurate emergency information and just general contact information. Once we have accurate information from the parents, then we can start to release Parent Access to more people. A lot of our parents have already, but particularly at the elementary school, they do not. And we're not fully utilizing the features that we have in Parent Access to communicate with the entire community. So, these are some of the features, I'm just going to list them all real quick. But we have that message center which will allow people to receive notifications if careers were updated, or there's a new letter for them to view, or a new survey, a new form to sign. We can put up letters about absences, detentions, and fines, and various variety exams. Documents is one, we can actually put any documents that we can scan. So, it could be 504s, IUPs, things we mailed, mail-in, whatever we want. And forms is similar to documents, except that it lets us collect information. So, we can collect health information that we now do on paper, surveys that we do, athletic forms, lots of different things that we can find. Online scheduling, we can do, partially do it, we use it at Lizarra a little bit, but we can do more scheduling in classes online during these meetings. Student recorders, we can show online, which we have assessment data, we're actually working on getting them, so we can show parents what their scores were, ASH or PAR, or whatever tests we want to, giving the data back to the state. And then, there's also a payment portion that can be utilized. And also, we can mass email parents from Genesis, although it's limited, it's not full-featured, like some of the systems might be. So, we have a pretty simplified to-do list of things that we're working on to make some of these features available. One is to clean up the contact data using the students' paper records. Joe Pellegrino in my office has already started this process of running reports to start cleaning up the data and get information on where we need to focus. Create policies and procedures for updating the data. Joe has also created these procedures that I've reviewed with him for the secretaries to know how to properly input the data so we make sure that we're keeping it clean. And then, we want to create student accounts so that they have access to their information. There's a couple steps to that, most of which are in progress. We're actually through the high school and we're working towards lower grades. Then, we want to inform parents that we're going to start collecting data online and have them change the passwords with our Parent Access accounts. Because we know that some students are using their parents' accounts to see their information, even though we don't officially support students having Parent Access. But once we give students their own accounts, then we want parents where they can take control of their own accounts so they can update phone numbers and things and the students don't have access anymore. So, we'll also do a, publicize that to the parents. We also want to connect, as I mentioned earlier, the emergency alert system, which we might want to change from what we have, possibly connect that to Genesis. And then, enable parents to start editing that information after we've told them the timeline for that. I'd also like to, in the future, as we roll features out, provide training for parents in a forum like the High School Auditorium, invite parents to go and train them on how to use the features and get the most out of it. And also, finally, regularly remind the parents to update their information. So, this is a long-term project, we can't tackle everything at one time, but a lot of its little faults, as we do one thing, we can then do two more and then do three more. So, we're working towards, towards all these items.
So, just one thing to mention to piggyback on Austin's presentation, this is a system we have in place already. The only cost for this is some data entry, which Austin, I believe you've told me exists in your budget presently to have extra set, extra clerical support.
I have phones, but it's not, it's not been more approved to use it for any purposes.
So, in effect, this is a no-cost way for us to increase communication for parents, for students, and I think it's an exciting initiative for us to be moving forward in this area.
Questions from the board? Thank you, Austin, very much.
You're welcome.
Yeah, can I just ask, reading the various items, cost-saving, postage, are progress reports and report cards part of this system? Are they still mailed or are they going to be part of the system in the future?
So, middle and high school have switched to online only. Elementary school, they're sent home in the backpacks, but we don't want to do that anymore. So, we want to put them online and then offer paper, obviously to anybody who can't get them online, we'll still do paper, probably find that not to be a big purpose for people. So, this is one of the ways we want to get more elementary parents to sign up. And we want to make sure we have proper data in for them to be able to do so, and then we want to move forward with that. It is one of the initiatives.
Any other questions from the board? You mentioned about email, that this system, Parent Access, doesn't have all the features for mass email. Is there an upgrade available or?
No, Genesis always says, Genesis is not a mass email system.
I'm sorry?
They always claim that they don't want you to be using it for that purpose. So, they say that they don't really support HTML, email, and fancy inserting pictures and things like that. It's really text notifications, which can be good enough in some cases, but there's other things we can do, and I'm working with Sue Marano on those types of things.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much, Austin.
Thank you.
Is this administrator's report?
No report.
Any questions?
One of the federated reports.
Are there any committee reports now that we have our committees?
Curriculum meeting for...
We're going to name a committee, we need to, for finance and...
Okay, so we'll schedule finance, Carmela? Mike?
Communications is also on February 12th, I believe it's.
Oh, thank you, yep, it is. Any delegate liaison reports? I'll just reiterate that on February 19th, I said last meeting, I'll say again, on February 19th, Morris County School Board Association is hosting a meeting. And at that meeting, the keynote presenters will be our own superintendent, Dr. Paul Freed, and our own business administrator, Mr. Jim Tevis. And they'll be discussing allocating limited resources to enhance student achievement, monitoring district finances, understanding monthly and annual financial reports, developing the school district budget, and understanding the importance of the relationship between the Board of Education, the superintendent, and the business administrator. And I'm very thrilled that Dr. Freed and Mr. Tevis will be presenting at the Morris County School Board's, because I think they're wonderful professionals and it's nice to have others watch them in action. So, looking forward to that meeting on the 19th. And thank you both for graciously accepting the invitation.
It's the 19th, Karen?
Yes.
And is that the one in Dover or?
It's at TIPS, yeah, in Morris Plains. I forwarded the board the emails that I... I forwarded the board the email today. Any other delegate reports? Can I? PTC reports from?
No, I have the Woodmont PT meeting.
Okay. And I was remiss last time, I did attend the January 15 Cedar Hill Home and School. They're looking forward to their upcoming treeby tray in a couple of weeks. I'll open it up now to public for public participation for anything on the agenda. We see none, post-public participation and motion for items J through O.
The motion. Sorry.
And so I don't know, you pick it. It will surprise us. Any questions on administrative? This is the finance, okay. Personnel? M, curriculum instruction? And policies? All those sessions? Both policies?
Mrs. Novy?
Yes.
Mr. Morell?
Yes.
Mr. Cooney?
Yes.
Mr. Grau?
Yes.
Mr. Modra?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
And Dr. Cordelia?
Yes.
Motion's passed.
Thank you. Are there any other reports or general board comments or business? Okay, I'll open it up to the public for any item, agenda, non-agenda. Okay, thank you. I'll close public participation and entertain a motion to adjourn.